Father Roger wants to know what the address is. We're walking over here, doesn't worry about it. Twelve oh nine zero.
It's not gonna work.
All the salt we stuff it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I've been open there. What your crap?
I don't know.
I had to go in a different way. Okay.
Oh, there you are. I'll see your wife when I go over there for you. There you are.
Hi there. We have fun?
Yes. Are you good? You got two of you here today. One brown one. Uh, the last one. That's her passion. Yeah, no, how are you? Yeah, I'd like to be mad at him.
All right, if everybody can come in and grab a seat, we're gonna start in about one minute.
I'll take this one.
Get a gavel yet? All right, Deborah, just let me know when you're ready. Ready? All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at five thirty, if I can start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Houston Marchman, District Two.
Philip King, District Three.
David Mers Jr. for District Four.
Robert Lee, District Five.
And Darren Schroder, Mayor, for about five more minutes. All right. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
The United States of America, through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Now, we have Pastor Mitch Cup from Calvary Friendship Church.
Good evening. I'd like, I'd like to read from Psalm thirty-seven, verse five. It reads, "Commit your way to the Lord, trust in Him, and He will do this." Let's pray. Father, we thank you for tonight, and we thank you for our city council. Lord bless this meeting, the members, our community, and all business conducted here tonight. May all decisions made here tonight be made in unity and in oneness. May all decisions made here tonight be in accordance with your will and your plans for our city and our community. Lord bless and show your favor to all that's in attendance here tonight. We ask and pray these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, Father.
Thank you, Pastor. Please be seated. So, we're gonna move things around a little bit. There were some, uh, some mistakes made in the, uh, scheduling, so we are going to move under item number eight. And, uh, excuse me, subject number eight, items A through F are going to go up to the front here. Uh, and we'll do the, um, the, uh, bring, welcoming in our, our new mayor, and then he'll start off with the rest of the meeting with the guts, okay? All right, so uh, first, under the Discussion and Action Item, Paul Carey, District Two. Paul, if you could come up for a moment? So, Paul, I wanna read this to you. This is I would love to read it to you with my glasses. So, specifically, it says, "With gratitude for your steadfast service to the citizens of Casterville, is District Two Councilmember. Your thoughtful leadership, commitment to the community, and voice at council table have helped shape the city's path forward. Your contributions will be appreciated for years to come, and this is for your service from May twenty seventeen to January of twenty twenty-five." And I wanted to add, um, I, I hope, uh, Mayor Alexander doesn't mind, I wanted to do this personally. You have been an inspiration to us all. You've been the voice of reason, you've been, uh, calm, smart, um, very thorough with your decisions, with your actions, and you've always served the, the will of the people. And I just, I appreciate everything that you've done. I know it's been at great personal, uh, cost, uh, as it is for pretty much all council members. It's, uh, it's a joy and a challenge to serve sometimes, so I just, I wanna thank you for everything that you've done for the city, taken us through thick and thin, just done an amazing job. I wanted to thank you personally. I'm happy to have known you and continue to know you, and I'm happy to call you friend. Thank you.
All right. Oh, don't go too far. We've got a presentation for you. We got a clock here for you, on behalf of all your service and everything. And it says, Darren Schroder, in recognition of your leadership and unwavering dedication to the people of Casterville, both as a council member and mayor. Oh, there, yeah, there's the back. All right, this is too small, Deborah. Your tireless efforts to preserve Casterville's dream while guiding its future here left a lasting legacy. Thank you for your service, vision, care for our community. Uh, this is too small.
All right, uh, next item is, uh, comments by outgoing Mayor Darren Schroder, that's me. I normally, for those of you who know, I typically will, uh, give presentations like this kind of off the cuff, and I just, I wanted to be very careful in my words and very purposeful in, um, what I'm saying, so if you'll bear with me for a second, I'm actually gonna read this. I've spent some time, and, uh, I just, I, I wanna be very specific in thinking. So, as my time as Mayor of Casterville comes to a close, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our community for the incredible honor of serving this beautiful city. It's been one of the greatest privileges of my life to work alongside you, people who deeply care about our community, our history, and our future. I believe that Casterville is more than just a place to see, sleep. It's more than just a point on a map. It's a living story rooted in rich heritage, shaped by generations of hardworking families, and brightened every day by the vibrant culture that makes our city so unique. Whether it's the charm of our historic homes, the laughter at local festivals, or the strength of neighbors helping neighbors, Casterville is a city built on connection and care. It is a city built around people. For decades, city leaders have seen the growth coming. When it finally came, it came with a vengeance. It's stressful to all of us, and in times like this, it's easy to fu- focus on the negative and allow division to creep in. But I've seen the power of focusing on what brings us together. A shared meal, a helping hand, a neighbor's smile. These are the simple things that remind us we're all a part of something bigger. When we choose to unite, to listen, to respect, and to work together, we build a community that reflects the very best of who we are. Over the years, I've learned that public service isn't just about holding office. It's about showing up. It's about lending a helping hand, listening with compassion, and doing your part, no matter how big, how small, or how hard. The truth is, each of us have the power to serve. Whether you're mentoring a young person, volunteering at a local event, supporting a small business, or simply being a good neighbor, you are shaping the future of Casterville. So, I encourage you, keep showing up, keep caring, keep building on the legacy of those who came before us, and keep dreaming about what this city can become. The future of Casterville is bright when we work together for good. Let's continue to honor our past while building a future that reflects the best of who we are, resilient, welcoming, and united. Thank you for allowing me to sh- serve. It's been a joy, sometimes a challenge, but a blessing I'll never forget. May Casterville continue to thrive because of you. Thank you. So, uh, next item is canvassing the May third, twenty twenty-five general election results for mayor.
Y'all should have your, uh, copy there in front of you, uh, that's the final tally, uh, from the county, and, uh, once you, uh, review it, uh, just if you accept it.
I make a motion that we accept the election results for May third? Yeah, May third, uh, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mayor, uh, uh, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is swearing in of Sheena Martinez, District One Councilmember, Houston Marchman, District Two Councilmember, and, uh, Robert Bob Lee, District Five Councilmember. Okay, so we're gonna start with Sheena, uh, and for the swearing in, we have our County Judge Keith Lutz. Thank you for coming and joining with us.
First of all, before I swear you in, I would like to just say thank you, uh, for allowing me to be here this evening. I think the words you said, Mayor, and I appreciate everything that you've done, our time working together. You have definitely always shown up, um, you've always been interested in no matter what it was, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the service you've given, and I hope you enjoy some well-deserved time off, um, not having to show up all the time, so, but thank you, thank you for our time together.
Thank you.
And of course, thank you to the citizens, uh, you know, it's humbling to be here in this position and to be allowed to be a part of this transition. Some people stay in, some people go in, but that's the way our country works, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity. And again, for me, it's very humbling to be here and to be asked to be a part of something like this, so with that, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, it's on you. All right, here we go. All right, you'll raise your right hand. Aye, Sheena Ann Martinez?
Aye, Sheena Ann Martinez.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of?
The duties of?
City Council, District One?
City Council, District One.
For the city of Casterville?
For the city of Casterville.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
The United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Now, we have Houston Marchman.
All right, Houston. Are you sure?
Pretty sure.
You better be real sure. Here we go. You'll raise your right hand. Aye, Houston Boy Marchman?
Aye, Houston Boy Marchman.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of City Council?
The duties of City Council.
District Two?
District Two.
For the city of Casterville?
For the city of Casterville.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
The United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Lee.
Lee?
I'm ready.
Reading's to you.
I know you're ready.
You're, you're so ready, your hands, your hands already out. All right. I, Robert Lee?
I, Robert Lee.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
City Council, District Five?
City Council, District Five.
Of the city of Casterville?
Of the city of Casterville.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
Constitution and laws.
The United States?
The United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
All right, so next, we are going to have, uh, Mayor-elect, uh, Alexander come in, and then we'll do the, the passing of the gavel. If you'll come up, please. The item is, uh, Administration of the Oath of Office Swearing in Bruce Alexander, Mayor.
That's the real question for you.
Absolutely.
Are you ready?
Absolutely.
I, Bruce Allen Alexander?
I, Bruce Allen Alexander.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of?
The duties of?
Mayor of the city of Casterville?
Mayor of the city of Casterville.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
And of this state?
And of this state. So help me God.
Uh, Mayor Alexander, if you'll stay there when you're done, I will come down.
Thank you, sir. There you go.
Judge, thank you very much. Okay, now what?
All right, I'll be right there.
He's gotta give you the hammer.
Set that there for just a moment. I gotta read this one, too.
Okay.
As I pass this gavel, I do so with deep respect for the office and hope for the future of Casterville. Too many times, this gavel has passed without a word, and my hope is that my successor will choose to honor the office when it comes time for him to pass it down to his successor. I leave this city with the strongest finances we've ever had, a phenomenal staff, a thriving economy, and a legacy of quality of life improvements, and a solid foundation of planning. My hope is that Mayor Alexander continues to build on this and also leaves the city better when he leaves than when he started. To you, Bruce Alexander, our new mayor, I offer my congratulations and my encouragement. This role is not just about leading, it's about listening. In a time when division can come easily, I urge you to choose unity. I encourage you to lead with a heart for all the people of Casterville. This is a city that is rich in history and full of promise. Its strength lies in its people, the families, the volunteers, the small business owners, and the quiet heroes who show up every day. I encourage you, engage with them, learn from them, let their voices shape your vision. Finally, I remind you that this gavel represents more than just leadership and authority. It represents responsibility. May you carry it with honor. May your leadership reflect the very best of Casterville. Thank you for serving. May God guide your way.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, well, that's okay. I've got it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for everything. Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we're gonna have, okay. That's all right. I think now we're gonna take a brief recess for some refreshments and kind of a little reception type thing. Probably about fifteen minutes or so, if everybody's okay with that.
Uh, what time is the, you're taking a recess?
Oh, whatever time it is, uh, it is, it is, uh, five forty-eight? Let's take a recess at five forty-eight, and we'll go from there. Thank y'all.
See, you got a three-minute timer there.
There is really a three-minute timer back there. He's not just making it up.
Oh, I didn't come to get that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's all the information. Okay? Do I have a name already?
Yeah.
Hi, guys. Hi. Hi, how are you? I'm gonna come down there. Thanks for the thing. Okay. We're gonna have a fun, exciting time, right, David?
Of course we are. And it's rare.
It's never, it's never boring. We're gonna have a good time. We're gonna have a good time.
Sorry, I didn't say.
Let me go up here. First of all. It, it could have been. It could have been... Long time, no see.
Long time.
Thank you. Thank you.
How are you doing? You all right? Good, doing good. Just working with y'all. Helping for a little rain. We've got a pretty good little rant that... The buyer's a rat, I was surprised when that came out, so... We didn't get much down here at all. The real strip came through. Neighbor said we got two acres. Yeah, that's nice. I was happy about that. That whole Hanes' old... But then... Not all Hanes' are on grass.
Right.
Yes, sir. Old County Judge, I used to, uh... I went to college with him.
Really?
Yeah. And we used to sing together, if you know how he does that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we knew each other from that, we still see each other like this and stuff. And, uh... Yeah, we used to sit in the dorm room and sing. Well, Thursday evening, Thursday night was a night in my apartment, right, in school and college. And, uh, we used to sing all... Have some cool old songs, sing all the real old songs. He's a good guy. I like him. Well, thank you for... Thank y'all for y'all's service this... We can, uh... I saw a thing that was came up on the post like yesterday about the stuff that y'all see that we can't even imagine y'all seeing stuff, and it's like, wow. I didn't think about it, and that, that post yesterday was like, that's true. The car wrecks and all, the bad things. Uh, y'all gotta be tough guys.
Okay. Okay. Change things around. I just want to move things around. But the one I want to move first is actually I'm going to focus. But honestly, if I work with this or the council. I'm just moving. Around, I'm not changing. I'm just changing the order. That's all. Absolutely. Something else.